This baby, we'll be out of here.
Well, I mean, it is raining. It is raining, so we could just spend the day here. Amity County?
This is nothing. It's not worth your time.
Hey Renee. What is that?
All corn and all corn. Well, Amity, Amity County, it's locked down. I've been down there. That's cool. That's what Jerry Flower did. Okay, alright. Guess we're up. Everybody don't... Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this Board of Supervisors meeting, June 29th. I'd like to call to order at this time our planning commission.
I didn't get there.
And Mr. Slay, would you mind doing our invocation?
Lord, as always, we start by acknowledging how thankful we are for all the ways that you bless us. We acknowledge you, Father, that we're calling on you. We need you, Father, to provide us with wisdom and discernment today. So, Father, I pray that your presence will be very real with us, and that we won't take for granted the reality that we are reliant on. Thank you, Father, for participation in government, the freedoms that we enjoy. And we know that those freedoms have been purchased at a very high price. Father, we thank you for those who've sacrificed. Thank you, Father, for those who support them who've also sacrificed. I pray, Father, that they would be blessed. Father, you will help us to recall them, especially at this time of year, and think about our nation's independence, and how incredibly fortunate we are to live where we live. Thank you, Lord, for all you do in Christ.
Amen. Everyone, check your phones. Put them on silent so it won't be an embarrassing moment. I've done that myself, so it makes me remember it. Okay, old business. Well, excuse me, consideration of approval of June 1st minutes. Motion to approve of Mr. Morrow, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Alright, old business.
Alright, well, we have seven hearings scheduled for Monday. Would y'all want me to review any of those, or any questions?
I'm good. I mean...
I'm good.
I will just say we've not received any calls except for on number eight, Tim Carter, the mining project. Paul Bridge, one person was in opposition. We have several calls just checking to see what they wanted to do, but only one. No, sir.
Okay. Well, okay, any other questions or any other thing else on there? If not, we'll move to new considerations.
Alright, the first item under new considerations is a rezoning request by Jay Anthony Cale on North Church Street. This property is located on the west side of North Church Street. It's approximately 97.4 acres. It's currently zoned RE1A, and he's seeking to rezone that property to RE1 for future development of this property. That's an aerial view of the property. Development of subdivisions, or major subdivisions, is not allowed in the RE1A zone. However, they may be considered as a transitional area, and they may be considered for rezoning. This map just shows how close it is to the city limits. It's in close proximity, that kind of purple-looking color, I think it's right there. This is the city of Florence right there. That's their city limits. This is a... These are views of that property. And then these are surrounding properties.
I make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion sets this public hearing by myself, second Mr. Morrow. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed?
Next is a conditional use permit for DuBo Dozer and Dirt on Stump Ridge Road. This property is located on the east side of Stump Ridge Road. Mr. DuBo is seeking the conditional use permit to mine approximately 13 acres on Stump Ridge. It's two parcels there. The property was recently rezoned to RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. They estimate the pit will be in operation approximately two to three years, and they're proposing hours of operation as being Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. until sunset. That's a view of that property. And when the mining has been completed and reclaimed, they plan to use that for residential development. There's really nothing else to take pictures of out there. It's mainly just wooded.
I make a motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion sets this public hearing, Mr. Gaines, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Alright, the last item is a conditional... Two conditional use permits, one for Celia Pendergrass and Joseph Lee Gunter at 270 and 272 Three Prong Road. This property is located on the east side of Three Prong Road. This is... Ms. Pendergrass and her siblings own this property. It's approximately 238 acres. It's zoned RE1. That's an aerial photo. There are two existing manufactured homes out there on the aerial. Ms. Pendergrass has already removed hers, and she wants to replace it with a brand-new double-wide manufactured home. Mr. Gunner is the caretaker, and he has an existing home out there that he wants to replace with a 2012 or 2013 double-wide. This is farmland that they've been farming for years. These are pictures of the property. And this is where Mrs. Pendergrass's home will be going. And then that's the caretaker's home.
I'll make the motion to set the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to set the public hearing by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Alright, the next item is a site plan architects review for Pilgrim Branch Baptist Church at 4033 Highway 471. This property is located on the west side of 471 at Nettie Chambers Road. It's a 3.70 acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. There's an existing church on the property, and they're going to do an addition for a church sanctuary. This is their site plan. It's a 5,990 square foot addition. That's their front elevation. The building will be brick with a metal roof. And these are the side elevations. That's a view of the existing church. And then these are surrounding properties. Mr. Parker has reviewed the drainage, and he's good with that.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Cross, second Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Nuisance properties.
Alright, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Alright, Miss Renee, let me go ahead and start. This time, we're gonna take up the matter of the continuation of Scott Linus and Evan Scott Deuce's property, 1645 Leesburg, District 4. This is a continuation of a hearing that we opened some time ago. So, may I demonstrate for us?
Alright, these pictures were taken May 30th, and you just wanted us to keep our eye on it and make sure that it remained in good shape. And so, these are the new pictures that were taken on the 27th, Tuesday. That was it. It's pretty much the same. There's some vehicles there, you know. I assume they're operable, though. Whatever that is, is just in the yard.
Is either Mr. Linus or Mr. Scott present? And we don't see anyone here to be in the matter of the nuisance property violation of this 1645 Leesburg property. We'll close that public hearing. This time, it would be appropriate to take any action.
It's not perfect, but it's probably better than a lot, or at least equal to most of what... I mean, I like it a little better, but I'd say it's, as far as from government stance, I think they complied with what we asked.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. No action will be taken at this time. We'll continue to monitor. How about that?
Yeah.
Alright. Thanks, Simon. Under the nuisance property considerations, Cynthia Morgan, nuisance property, 116 Wesley Street, this is District 1. May I demonstrate for us?
Alright, we've received complaints from joining property owners here about the condition of this property. These pictures were taken September of 2016. The yard was overgrown, and there was rubbish and debris. Now, these are pictures that were taken this morning. They started some work on the house, but it's like they just stopped, and they've left it now. Somebody is cutting the grass.
Yeah, got outside the toilet.
Yeah.
This time, I'll ask, is there anyone... Is Miss Morgan, Cynthia Morgan, present by chance? Is anyone here on Cynthia Morgan's property? Gentlemen, I see someone here on that matter. At this time, we'll close that public hearing if appropriate, taking the action.
Let me ask you, is someone living in it?
No.
No? Okay. When we send out, is it local that it's been sent to?
No, she doesn't live in the county. She did receive some of the mail, but this last notice, she did not sign for her certified mail. We did mail it, regular mail also, but we've not had any contact from her.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna declare the nuisance.
Second.
Okay, most declare this nuisance by myself, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye. All opposed? I would like to ask one thing. On this, you know, the out-of-the-county thing is an issue we run into. We had discussed, or it had been brought to us, that it might be something to change, some of that, and that, I believe, was in July, that it would happen. Do we know or any more update or anything on that?
No, sir, we don't have an update on that. What we were hoping to hear is that they authorize us to use private process.
Right.
For that purpose. And we don't have any direction as of today. We don't have any...
It was supposed to come sometime, and the way I understood it, going effect in July, so, okay.
I'll ask Ms. Laura to help me remember if they showed my constables to see, given that they're aware of any...
One particular judge was on top of it, so we'll contact him, too.
We need a comment on that. If there's some word here, I don't have word. It's more than...
Okay. No, I just, it made me think about it when I realized it's out of town, so, alright. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, Renee. Next.
It's okay.
The next one is the, I don't know how to pronounce the second names, I'll guess, Graylin and McHale Jones, nuisance properties of 404 Mill Run Road, District 2. We'll open that hearing if you will demonstrate for us.
Alright, these pictures were taken in December of 2016. We've received numerous complaints for several years on vehicles that are parked here with the car covers on them, as far as being inoperable, that they don't, you know, move out of that spot. These are the new pictures that were taken June 27th. Only one vehicle remains there. We have had been contacted by the owners. The car has a tag, current tag, they say, in that it is operable.
And the one that just got the cover on it, is that something wrong with it?
Well, they're saying that it runs, and that it has, it does have a current tag.
I would imagine it, if it's got a cover, it's probably of some value.
Looks like a bug.
Hmm?
Looks like a bug.
I think it is.
Alright, that public hearing, so is anyone here on behalf of Graylin and McHale Jones?
We are here, Your Honor.
Great.
We have Graylin Jones here, and I'm Thomas Bryson, I'm an attorney with Keys, Bryson and Piazza.
Please come forth, come forth and state your name and address, please.
Alright, I'm Thomas Bryson, with Keys, Bryson and Piazza Attorneys, and I have Mr. Graylin Jones here.
Give your name and address also, please.
Name, Graylin Jones, address 404 Mill, Front Row.
Yeah, okay. Alright, thank you.
Just to be a little awkward.
Yes, I want you to go ahead.
Yeah.
We have some additional photographs for the board's information, and I think I've got about three or four copies here, so we may have to pass some around.
That's fine.
If we can do that, I think it'll clear up.
So, we, so curiosity's killing us. What is under the cover? It is a bug, okay.
That's a classic. And I had a girlfriend in college that had one of those.
That wasn't long ago at all, was it?
No, not long ago.
It's got an antique tag.
It's got antique tag, yeah. It's leaving.
I like the red car.
Would you tell them about the other car that you had covered?
Yeah, it was a 71, I mean, I'm sorry, 94 Firebird, and I put it in the garage.
And it's operated a lot, so...
Yes.
Yeah, and the only thing, I wouldn't make any kind of comment, too, on that, is just the cosmetics of it on the outside. Keep it as clean as you can out there, and as long as the vehicle's up and running, then obviously you're well inside your limits of that. So, that's the main thing. The first picture, we, I think that came up on the screen, visually, that one right there, kinda jumps out to you a little bit right there. We just ask you to keep it cleaned up around that same side, and, you know, I think the way the regulation states, as long as you got an operable tag and the vehicle ride and move and stuff like that, then it's good. So, just be aware of the cosmetic side of it, if you do that. For me, I'm good on my stance on that point.
Right, and I think you told me that infrequently he does drive it, but it is a classic.
Yeah. Well, I think the main thing, like you said, is just, you know, keep it, because of where you are, where you live, it's just the visible part of it, just keep it clean. I think you, we won't draw attention.
Sure, I'm good. Could you trade in them two minivans for that red car?
We'll consider that matter closed, and we'll reflect that no action's taken. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for making the effort. Thank you.
The last matter under the nuisance section is the Cheryl Evans nuisance property at 326 Mill Creek Drive. It's a District 2 property. We'll open the public hearing, and Renee will demonstrate for us.
Alright, these take, these pictures were taken in February of 2017. We had gotten complaints of an inoperable vehicle being parked on the, there at this home also. I think I'm missing my picture somehow of the vehicle itself. That's the tag. It's a red truck that was there then, but we've received complaints here as well.
You have some good shots of the tag, great shots.
Yeah, for a good while. Anyway, these are the new pictures. The vehicle is gone. It's been removed.
Is anyone here on the Cheryl Evans nuisance... Are you Miss Evans? Okay, good. You might come forward and say... Do we have anything we really need to address?
I don't, I don't think so.
Thank you for coming. Give me your name and address.
Cheryl Evans, 326 Mill Creek Drive, and I'm in Simp.
How are you, Miss Evans?
Uh, would be better. My house hasn't flooded. Can't hint. Can't hint. Helps me a few problems. The truck is still in possession, and it just happened not to be there when you took pictures. It happens to be my daughter's car that's parked there right now. Truck is operable. It has a current tag, as you see, and I do drive it. It had a cover on it, because this was January, and with the winds and storms and stuff, I just protected it, because it's a pretty red, and I like the way it looks, and I didn't want it damaged.
Okay.
And see, it's current.
Yeah, and I don't think I was gonna say, it was the same comments I made to the other gentleman there, you know.
We're trying. Let me show you something. Y'all did me a favor. I've asked for Infinity, and I have proof. As a matter of fact, as I came over today, why, I went right here to them, right at nine o'clock today. Infinity wouldn't come bury the cable. Who's Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, is he here? He just went out. Anyway, I told him that as soon as we got that, is it whatever thing we have to go through to get permits to move power, stuff and all that. Well, Infinity got there this morning, okay? We have been through them about three or four times. Every time I went to pay my bill, I asked them. I said, now I have a hearing, and y'all can come join me. And guess what? They decided they could do something. So, thank you very much.
Oh, great. Great. Timing was perfect.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We'll close that public hearing, and we'll reflect that no action was taken.
Okay, thank you. Alright, next meeting will be held Thursday, August 3rd. They have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Morrow, second Mr. Bishop. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, now we'll move right on to call the Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We have Ryan Matthews and Trey Pittman.
Y'all wanna go to the...
Do what now?
We missing one. We're gonna wait a little while.
Okay. Alright. We're bringing, we're just getting bumped down. Okay, alright, Mr. Slay, you wanna jump in?
This is a matter that's sort of been hanging over. We sent our petition that we got on the individuals who had executed, a petition for the expansion of the Cleary Fire, Water, Fire and Sewer District.
Right.
And that petition was delivered to our circuit clerk. She reviewed the petition and confirmed that there were the requisite number of names, and that those individuals that signed actually lived in the area to be annexed as a part of the Cleary Water, Fire and Sewer District. And so, this is the next step in the process now, which is to adopt a resolution. It's, I think it's attached. Ms. Janice, is it attached here? I didn't...
Yeah, it is. The resolution, you'll see that there is a proposed resolution that will be necessary for the publication of a notice of hearing. We have to actually have a public hearing for the expansion. That public hearing will be set over in August. I believe we've got it set for August.
Ma'am, ma'am, I believe they're trying to get, yeah. She forgot something.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe we're gonna set that public hearing for August the 7th, and so we've gotta publish a notice. So, really, all you're doing today is you're setting the hearing, and you're authorizing the publication of the required notice to consider the expansion of the district on the 7th. Okay?
Can you make a motion?
Yes, please. Need a motion to authorize...
I make a motion to set the public hearing for August, whatever.
August the 7th.
Okay, motion of Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay, that was quick. Ms. Oster?
Thank you. The first item I have is request approval of a budget amendment for triad grant to transfer between line items, and they had a $200 increase in additional funds. This is, tomorrow closes out the grant, so we need to move the money so that they are in compliance.
Second.
Okay, motion approved by Mr. Morrow, second Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Thank you. The next item is request approval of budget amendment for juvenile court to transfer between line items. This is also for a grant for purchases that they have to make before the 30th.
Someone...
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cross, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Thank you. The next item is request authority for Brian Grantham to attend the leadership ranking program, and authority to issue a check to pay tuition amount of $750.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Morrow, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed?
And the next item would be the review of the agendas for the 5th.
Got a quick question here. I noticed Mr. Parker, Mr. Thames out there, who's here, I think, on some business, Mr. Parker, but I think that's on Tuesday's agenda. Is, were you thinking it was gonna be on today's agenda? Again, approval?
He just said it'd be on the work session that just came.
Yeah, we got him on Wednesday's agenda.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, the only question I've got, and it may be on there, may not, what's our plan on that, setting public hearings on that ordinance development, development, so, are we close to setting that for a public hearing?
We got you as a, if you'll see, on the agenda for Wednesday, Daniel, we got that as a discussion item.
Okay, it's on next Wednesday. Okay, good. I couldn't remember if it was or what.
Yes.
Who's bringing God? What is VDIC?
That's your...
Mosquito Man.
Control.
Oh, okay. I knew I knew that name.
Are we, do we have everybody here yet?
Yeah, they're setting up.
Yeah, I mean, so we have all attendees.
Just on side note, something we might have to add. I'm also waiting on Brian Grantham right now to get a sole source letter on an item that he wants to purchase. Grant deadlines, most of them fall tomorrow, and the last sole source we had on it was 2015, so Bridget said we need an updated one, and it needs to be approved before the 30th to use these funds.
Okay.
Or we have to escrow them into next year. I'm just waiting on him. I told him before the meeting today, we want a letter.
You better hurry up.
That's what I told him.
Okay, you sent him another message?
Bridget was calling him, telling him before today's up, we need to get reflected on the minutes.
Okay.
Okay, so what do we do if, if he doesn't come forward?
Well, I have to escrow the money into next year's budget, and...
Why did we miss the window for that?
I can't answer that. I'm sorry.
On EOC?
Well, yes, sir, they're the ones that, that do the grant. I help with the paperwork. But this has been on everybody. They know the grant's coming to a close, and they scramble to get the money. We can escrow. We will not lose the funds. It will be escrowed into next year, but then we'll have to get approval to spend that money before we can do anything with it next year's grant.
Guess it's irritating. EOC's behind the game on this right here, so maybe Brian will show up, and he can tell someone.
So, how do we have to get updated sole source letters?
Because they may not be sole sourced forever.
That's right. And that was 2015.
What are they trying to buy?
So, how current does that start?
Maybe it was some Lucas devices and several other things, and I just glanced at the PO that he had sent in today, and then Bridget came to me and said that we needed that letter on it.
You said they need to be within a year?
Yes.
My preference would be that they keep us within one year.
They made it from 15 to 17. I got you.
That's a popular, if it's the Lucas device, it's a popular device. Everybody'd like to get the market on that, because everybody wants them, you know. Hot ticket item.
Are you the reason we're having these problems?
It is. I'm so sorry. You know it's a problem if I get up here.
We had the opportunity to be out here by 9:30.
Well, record. We were gonna sell records, I mean.
I couldn't let that happen. I want to introduce you to these, these guys, Ryan Matthews and Trey Pittman. They are with GovEas. It's a company I've been talking with about the online tax sale.
That's an oxymoron, isn't it?
Well...
GovEas?
GovEas.
We're introducing something brand new.
Okay, okay, my bad.
We're trying to get there. We're trying to get there. And I really think it's something that everybody's gonna be doing before long, so. We didn't want to be the last ones in, but we also didn't want to be the first ones in. But I'll let them show you what they're talking about.
And just a brief introduction on what we're doing. The online tax sale is legislation that was introduced in the 2015 session. It was passed to where the auctions could actually be held online. Last year, we held our first auction with our pilot counties of Madison and Lee County, and we've got a brief presentation to kind of show you how it works, give you an idea of what goes on during the online auction, as soon as that thing loads up. And actually, excuse me a second. And show you the, the results that we got in this briefing presentation as well, and some projections that we showed for Rankin County. And this is from a revenue side, the additions for efficiencies for Ms. Judy's office, and kind of some advantages that the bidders or participants in the auction will have as well. The, the additions for efficiencies for Ms. Judy's office, and, and kind of some advantages that the bidders or participants in the auction will have as well.
So, like Ryan was saying, um, we, we, we set out with this a year ago, working with Supervisors Association, M A S. The Tax Collector's Association to really build a better way to conduct these online auctions. Currently, right now, the way the auction works is you auction off your, um, your delinquent taxes, and the way the bidding works is any amount that is bid above that is what they call an overbid, um, and the overbid ends up going to the county as a form of revenue that is outside of just the collection of taxes. Um, so if you move on through here, um, just skip on, because we've talked about that. Uh, so, a couple of the, the biggest benefits to the, to the online auction. One thing is it's, it's a lot easier for people to access. Currently, you have to physically show up, um, to the boardroom or wherever you're, you're holding it now. Um, and you sit in there for a couple of days, raising your hand to conduct this auction. Um, and Ms. Thornberry, she's selling off a couple million dollars worth of delinquent taxes, so, um, it, it takes quite a long time. And it also creates a barrier for, uh, local people to bid. So, if I'm at my office, or if I'm, you know, if I actually have a job, which a lot of people do, um, they can't take off, you know, four days to come up here and participate in these auctions. Um, so, and one of the things that you'll see later on, um, just a few minutes down here, um, is that we had an increase in local buyers in Madison and Lee County through our pilot counties. Um, and that was because of the easier access. I can now buy from my phone. I can buy from my computer at my house. I don't have to come up here and raise my hand.
And we don't lose our space for a week.
There you go. So, move on, Ryan, if you don't mind?
I moved on.
He's moved on. It has not.
Are we required to still have the physical sale? I mean, she's still gonna, no?
No, sir.
All?
Yes, sir. Fully online. And, and we do a couple of things that, uh, help, and I don't necessarily need the rest of this, because it's pretty easy to explain. Um, but we do a couple of things that, that makes it easier. Um, we will, we suggest setting up a couple of terminals, in other words, computers. If you do have somebody who shows up, uh, then they can just walk up to the computer and, uh, you know, place their bids from, from that terminal. Um, we did that, uh, last year. Very, very few people showed up. We, we, we conduct, uh, we spend a lot of time training the bidders. So, we do two training classes a day for an entire month. Um, so, la, and, and we'll train probably this year around 2,000 bidders across the state. Um, and, uh, so having those terminals kind of helps if anybody does show up. If they, for some reason, they don't have a computer or technology access, you'll have, you know, a couple of terminals, but like I said, no one really used it. But it is there, um, to, uh, for that.
We, we caught up.
Okay, we're, we're caught up. Uh, and with the online auction, you get a couple of, you know, outside of the benefits of easier access, um, what that brings is it also brings a more competitive auction. Um, you know, and you guys have the, uh, the details, and Ryan, you can skip on down. Well, actually, and I'll just show you something. Show you a picture of what we do. Keep going down. So, one of the things that we incorporated was pictures of the properties. Um, this is not something that they have now. Uh, when, when, when you sit in the auction, and generally speaking, you get the, the list of parcels a couple of days before the auction starts. It's impossible to research a couple thousand parcels, especially if you're bidding in multiple counties. Uh, so we tie in all the data from, um, from the tax collector's system to pull out all historical information, whether it's been sold before, and we will go out and show them a picture of the property, um, which is very important for a purchaser. Um, all of these things help, help, uh, create a more competitive, uh, bidding environment. Um, and if you move on through, we'll show you, um, it's a pretty simple thing. One more, if you don't mind, keep going. This is, uh, this is what it looks like when you want to buy on your phone. It's, shows a picture of the property, pretty simple. You type in the amount you want to bid, and you're done. And, uh, it's, it, it runs very smooth like that. Uh, so, and, and moving on towards the end, you'll, let's see here. I'll show you, and you guys have these, but I want to run through these. So, this is an example for Lee County. So, Lee County, um, prior to going online with their auction, averaged a 10.8% overbid rate. So, that means for every $1,000 in bids they received, they would take in, you know, um, $108 of overbid, which ends up to the county as revenue. After going online, that moved to 14.2%, which was $150,000 per year gain. Okay, so that's every year now. So, that rate has moved 14.2, almost the exact same results for Madison County.
When you said the gain from, put, implementing this was $150,000.
Yes, sir.
It went from 10% to 14%, but the margin, I mean, that's, the margin is 4. something percent.
Yes, sir.
We've really.
4.4% across three mil, you know, so for example, Lee County was $3 million. So, an, an extra 4% of $3 million, which resulted in, if you go back. So, if we go back, so for instance, that was a 50% increase in additional revenue for them, a premium increase of, you know, like you said, 4%. That's 4% across $3 million, $3.5 million. Very similar sized auctions, both of these, to, to your auction. Uh, Madison County was almost exactly the same. Their yield went up to 14.1, I think, 8%, something like that, and theirs was, I believe, at 9.9%.
I think it's a great idea.
I do too. I think it's good.
Are we gonna try to implement this, this coming up?
How much is it gonna cost?
That is way more than 4% from 256 to 466.
This one is Madison County.
This is Madison County.
I know, but I'm looking from 15 to 16 is $219,000.
It's an 88% increase.
Yes, sir.
You'll see that that's just wrong.
That's just the overbid rate. So, that's, that's just the rate of return off of what you were selling at that auction. So, that, that, if you go from four, if you go at 4% at 10%, then that's a 40-something percent increase. It's a large, large increase.
But they. I'll ask Judy about it later.
Well, you can, look, I, I, if anything I can help on.
I think that some of this from 247 to 466 was a natural increase with more valued properties.
We, we, so, the part of those numbers, we went back three years. So, you will see, and you, we can run the numbers here. So, for the previous three years, both Madison and Lee were averaging almost exactly what they were last year. So, and.
Okay.
We, we, we pulled that extra 4% out by the way the auction works, because we understand how the bidders, we know how the, we know, we know what premium, because you gotta remember, this is yielding 18% a year, and it's backed by a security of a tax deed, okay? So, 18% a year, and your average property going longer than a year, then they're, they know going into this, a bidder knows that they're gonna potentially be getting around 20-something percent on average. Well, 14% that they're giving up, they're still making 6%, plus they have a security and a tax deed, so that if they don't pay it, they end up owning it, which even further increases their returns. So, the 14% yield is what the market should be bearing. And if you look at other states that have moved to an online auction, that's similar to what the returns that they're, they should be expecting as well. And you'll see here in Madison, one of the things that we threw on here was that the, that was the increase in bidders, and it was all additional local bidders. They went from 50 to 102.
Doubles almost.
Yes. And that, like I said, they were mostly local bidders now. I'm not saying that they dominated the auction. I mean, at the end of the day, large financial institutions are usually coming in buying these, but there was a big increase in bidders.
Thanks on the convenience.
Mortgage holders.
So, if we were to use you guys, we would no longer have a public auction? It wouldn't be held in person?
This is your public auction.
A capability? Well, I don't know. How does it work in terms of getting down to the wire? If you only have two terminals, and we have 10 people show up, how do they manage to get in their last bid without time?
So, part of that, and this is what I was talking about earlier, we, we start our registration and training on July 31st. So, we send out notifications to all the bidders, anybody who's bid in the past. Um, we come here on site and hold a training session for all the bidders. Um, but up until that, every single day, they can be trained on how to bid on the system, because the goal is that they, they shouldn't, they shouldn't show up here. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, they're, they know, and the bidders know. I mean, at this point, we're, we're gonna be looking, we're gonna have probably 30 counties doing this this year, um, and.
We had, last year in Madison County, we had one person show up for that day, and, and they stayed for about five minutes and said, I can do this from the house.
And that was somebody who was totally oblivious to any of it happening. So, um, we get them trained ahead of time so that they're not showing up here. The two, the, setting the terminals up is strictly for convenience. If you happen to have somebody show up, but it really was not used in either county, and I don't believe it will be here.
If they did show up, and those, both those terminals were being used, we probably would have somebody to show them how they could bid on their iPhone.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, y'all be on site?
Yes, sir.
So, let's find out how much it's gonna cost us.
So.
And I'd also like to run the numbers, see what higher comparison. See what we've been running.
Can you project what will look like?
Yeah.
I think, is it in there?
They should be on the sheet that you have.
That is ours.
Yes, sir. This is your.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right here.
Oh, alright.
I think I want it double. They double.
Well, you know, it, we do, we do the projection at 14. Um, it's probably gonna be closer to 14 and a half, upwards to 15, depending, um, on the market. So, we're, we try to be a little conservative on the 14%. So, but, um, you, you probably realistically would be closer to 14 and a half, but I, we try not to promise too much of that, um, which would be an increase of $90,000 to the county. Our fee is 1.25% of the auction. So, we charge 1.25%.
Not the overbid, but the total.
The entire auction, yes, sir.
Let's work it on the overbid. Because we're gonna get the auction anyhow.
We'll be here for a long time, you guys.
We're gonna do the auction anyway.
Sir?
Hey, you got a good point. We're gonna do the auction anyway.
Yes, sir, but I'm gonna bring you $90,000 more dollars. So, and I'm gonna charge you, I'm charging 1.25%, which is gonna be $30,000, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna generate you $60,000 more dollars that's gonna go into your pocket every year.
Is that like guaranteed?
So, is there?
Well, we don't, we don't have to do the contract next year.
Yeah, exactly. We have a, look, in our contract, it is a 60, 60-day out clause at any time that, you know, if you, if you do it this year, and you go, hey, I don't feel like that it, it did anything for us, then you get to cancel it.
And Trey, we discussed that with Greg earlier. We're, we're gonna do a 30-day on that one.
Okay, yeah, 30 days. Whatever you want to do it. I mean, we could do it in 10 days, Rock. I mean, you know, we, we, gen, oh, look, we, we stand behind it on that. I mean, we, we, we believe and we know the yields that should be expected from Erie County.
So, I've started looking. Ms. Judy asked me to take a look at the proposed contract. I've already started looking at it. Uh, we've made some inquiries around, just to double check. Uh, Ryan has been at, but I, you know, I had, Trey just had that.
Yes, sir.
I've been working with Ryan, uh, and so we've been interacting about the contract. I, I'm satisfied with the language of the contract, especially in light of the fact that they, they're being flexible. We like outs. We like out provisions. Uh, that way, if, if there's something that is just simply not working for us, we don't get caught in the bind of a lot of rigmarole. And so, uh, with their flexibility to give us the out, then I think we can really take an exploratory look at this and make sure it works. Couple of things you need to be aware of, they had to start somewhere, and so, uh, these guys started with Lee and Madison County. Those two counties were the guinea pig counties, and, um, you can imagine there was some integration issues that went with that, having to work with Delta, uh, with respect to all the data. And so, a lot of the bugs have gotten worked out of the system already by their interaction with those two counties specifically. Well, you would naturally assume that because Lee and Madison were the guinea pigs, that they have, they get to reap the benefit of being the guinea pig counties. And so, the Madison and Lee deals, full disclosure, are slightly different than what's being proposed now, and what the other counties around the state are being asked to do. So, Madison and Lee County have a 1% deal. They, but they are also on the hook for long-term contracts, and so, there's some trade-off here. For us to get the flexibility of the 30-day out, they're asking us to shoulder a little more of the cost, that 1.25 as opposed to 1. I don't think it's exorbitant. I don't think it's out of the ballpark for us. Uh, if, even at this conservative analysis, if it plays out like it should, the county's got 60 grand annually on top of the cost. In other words, somebody else is responsible for overseeing the auction. Somebody else is handling all of that, and we're putting 60 grand more in our pocket for less trouble. We get a freed-up boardroom. We get a staff at the tax collector's office that's dealing with everyday stuff that they always have to deal with, and their staff's not committed to this. So, I think our, the benefit of the proposal is pretty obvious to me, and I don't think that it's out of line for them to ask us to pay a little bit more than at least those two counties. My understanding is that they are under contract now with somewhere over 20 counties already. And that outside of Lee and Madison, every other county is paying the 1.25. So, we're not out of the ballpark. Uh, I'm, I'm satisfied with it. I think Ms. Judy is in favor of moving this direction. I've looked at the contract. I think we're there. You will get a chance to officially speak on this Wednesday. We'll try to get it on there to talk about if y'all want.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add a couple more questions when you get through.
Please.
Is there a service fee for our users?
That's it. That's, that's the only fee that we charge is the 1.25%. That's it.
So, who's gonna be the merchant count?
The.
Who's gonna be the merchant account? Are you guys gonna have it?
No, 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 no. Ms. Judy still, she will still sell all the money.
So, all the transactions that go through, we will actually get some money then from the transactions?
She gets there. She gets the money. Money goes through her.
Jay, the vast majority of the bidders put forward, the, in essence, a blank check.
That's not what I'm talking about. Whenever you do online purchasing through credit card machines, depending on your volume, you, you give back proceeds.
Well, that will, any of that will go through your office. None of that goes through us. So, you would get any benefit of that.
The, the fee from the credit card, we don't get.
Okay.
That's just for the credit card machine. They don't have to use credit card. They use a check or money.
And you, I guess whoever set up our credit card machines then will be the ones getting the additional money. For more volume we go through, more money they make.
Right.
You know, so, we really fix and pile a lot through there then.
Well, it's just, I mean, the overage.
Yeah, it's really just the overage.
How do we normally do our, our, uh, auctions? Do they usually pay that way?
The big guys that are buying million dollars, they don't give you a credit.
Right. Yeah.
They give you a check, because they don't pay for any of the checks.
I got you.
Very few actually pay you for the credit card. Not online, but I do.
It's not an option online, is it?
They probably have to, online.
No, 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 they're not. They, they, they still arrange their payment through.
Like a blank check?
Because they gotta be qualified to bid, right?
Yes, sir.
They gotta be pre-qualified to get into the bidding side of it, through that office.
Without going into the details, we have all of those functions in there for her. And currently, so like right now, if I go sit in an auction right now, even, even as a bidder, and I'm buying, I may not even know how much I've spent in the last three hours, but with our system, we control exactly how much that each bidder can spend. So, you know, if they give her a check for $20,000, or say they're good for $20,000, when they get to $20,000, it cuts them off. Unless they call and get approved for more. So, it's just extra controls for her to, to really know how much everybody's spending and keep somebody from spending over, too much, and then coming back saying, uh, I don't, didn't really mean to do that.
I think maybe what is being assumed here is that they bid, they win a bid, then they have to come down here and bring you a check for that amount. That's not, that's simply not the way it works. That, that payment is handled through Ms. Judy, and more than likely, before the auction ever starts, there will be an amount on deposit with her.
And that's the way it happens today. So, you know, in general, you pretty much have to have your payment arranged before you are allowed to bid. And she, and, and so not anybody can just log in here and start bidding. You physically have to be approved. Somebody in her office has to go click a button that says, you are approved to bid, and you are approved to bid for X amount of money.
Try and tell them about going in and setting up their bids early.
Yes, and one, and one of the things that, the reason why the yields are going up is the way that we handle the bidding is a little bit different than the way the bidding has been held in the past.
Early voting.
Yes, exactly. So, if I'm a bidder, I can go load in the maximum amount I'm willing to spend on every parcel.
It's like eBay.
Exactly. And so, then, if we're all in this room, and we've all uploaded our bids, when the auction starts, it starts with the highest bid that has been, uh, what we call our, our pre-bid, or our maximum bid, starts with the highest person. So, you know, it's, and no one know, if you're sitting in a room, and I'm not saying this happens, but if you're sitting in a room with a bunch of bidders, sometimes it can be, okay, you're gonna get that one? Okay, I'm good. I'm gonna get the next one, right? You know what I mean? Like, and you can see them, and you know, you know, but in this, totally anonymous, you have to put your best foot forward if you want to win it. And that's where the increase in premiums come from, is that maximum bid that happens ahead of time. So, because especially for anybody who's doing this as a business, they have all of this written. They know how much they're willing to spend on every single parcel before they walk in there. And I'm sure Ms. Judy could tell you that most of the bidders walk in with a sheet that is pretty much telling them how much to spend on each parcel. That just simply gets uploaded, and then it's just a. then it's just a automatic competitive bid happening in real time.
I have one comment and one question.
Yes, sir.
The comment is, last year, I heard from the office staff, how many obstacles and distractions, and then I, so I came up here for the bidding. And this was days, and this room was full, and cords running everywhere, and there's majority of the, or professional people, and I'd say majority of those are mortgage holders, that's gonna like this better than coming here. So I am in favor. But we're one of the probably higher valued counties. I mean, look at even Madison, or whatever. There's gonna be more money flowing through your hands in this county than any of the other twenty that you probably signed the contract on.
Well, we have Harrison, which is probably runs.
Most of their checks are bad.
I think Harrison has, they're ours.
You'll have to pick it up in the book.
I think they're about seven, I think they have about a seven million dollar auction. It's almost twice the size. Jackson is, I believe, bigger.
Jackson's seven million.
Yeah, Jackson's seven million.
That's true.
You gotta think about what's being sold in these auctions, too, and the value of the property that actually makes it exist.
Generally, it's not your nicest billings.
We can't be on a scale to where the more money that you sell and make, the less percentage you charge us, instead of, like, once we hit two hundred, I mean, the overage at two hundred thousand, it goes down a little bit, and then four hundred down a little, to where we might.
Well, that, you know, right now, that is the way, the one point two five percent is the way we priced it, because when we looked at it, we looked at every single county.
See what I'm saying? In one day, in this county, you're making a lot more than you'd make in one day in Scott County or Simpson County. But we're gonna pay the same percentage.
And we're also going to train probably five times the bidders, and we're gonna have an auction that's gonna run much longer, and it's gonna be a lot more intensive for us. So that is, I mean, that is just, that is our pricing structure. It's.
Our operating costs are gonna remain constant across each county for us.
Except Madison and Lee.
We're operating basically at cost there.
Yeah. And, and look, and full disclosure, in Madison, Lee is one percent versus one point two five. And that was done in the faith of a longer-term contract, and the fact that they, we offered that to any county our first year. And we knew that, you know, the legislation had just gotten passed. But we just needed, we knew that the yields would increase, but we needed counties to participate. But the one point two five is the same deal that Harrison, you name it.
I wanted to last year, so go ahead and.
Well, if we can, you know what?
Twenty-five basis points out of each budget, gonna bring that back.
Well, we'll take, I don't know what one point two five percent of last year's auction, or one percent of last year's auction is, but maybe we'll take that.
Okay, okay.
And I wanna say one thing on that. I met Ryan and Trey both last year, and heard everything last year, was fourth in. I think, I'm all for, I think these two guys have got a great product and a great system that's out there. And I appreciate you coming back in here for us and giving us a look at it.
We're glad to be here.
We're still working on a couple of details on the contract, so we're not asking y'all to do anything today. But we'll probably get it on here for Wednesday, if y'all are okay. You wanna talk about it Wednesday, we can do that.
Yeah. I would.
Sounds like, sounds like everything's good, except the percentage. I think that's the only thing.
I just hate for Madison to get one on us.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing.
Well, I mean, a lot of options are, so much percent for the first amount, and then it drops down, and it drops down.
I guess my only pillow, I guess, on that deal is, we got the early buy. We can get out whenever we want.
Oh, yeah.
Is there other people doing this now, too?
There'll be competition coming, I guarantee.
Is there another company?
Right, around here, in Mississippi?
No, sir, not in Mississippi.
Not yet.
Y'all got it in early.
No.
Well, we got, look, we worked with the association to get the law passed. I mean, we have worked from MAS and the Tax Collector Association from day one, craft legislation, and to work out how it worked and everything. It is a Mississippi auction. We are a Mississippi company. So that is.
Y'all live in Rankin County?
No, sir. Live in Madison.
Madison County.
Hey, look, and, and look.
You should've just kept that.
You might should. You were doing good.
Full disclosure, full disclosure, we signed Lee County last year, and at the
last minute, Madison called us without pretty much any solicitation whatsoever, and said that they wanted to go in. It was just going to be Lee. So it has nothing to do, I wish I had that kind of pull. I moved here from Dallas. I wish I had the pull to have pulled that one off. If that was the case, then I would, Ryan would live in, we wouldn't live in Madison. I can assure you that. Because there's a lot bigger counties out there. We would, Ryan would probably live in Heinz County. I'd live in Rankin County. We, you know, if it worked that way.
You might better stop talking.
Well, you can still buy property. It's gonna be.
A couple pieces of property.
That's right. That's right.
No, I cannot, I cannot buy property. I try to keep it, there might be a conflict of interest, so.
You don't have to buy tax sales. We have other properties.
Okay, I can do that. Well, thank y'all.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I do have an item to add. That's why I left him in here to go to see if I could get up with Brian. And I do wanna clear something up. When Bridget came to me this morning with the PO, she was mistaken that it was EMSOF. And I'm not throwing her under the bus. I understand how. This last year was the first year that we set a separate department aside called EMS, that's out of the county funds. And so it is not the EMSOF grant. It is the EMS. And what happened is, and I appreciate Brian doing this, he filled out a requisition for some Lucas devices, and they gave him an amount. And he said, guys, I can't do that amount. He said, I just, I can't go that amount. And they said, we'll give you this discount, which was about twelve thousand dollars, if you will do it by June thirtieth. And so I did print out the sole source letter that came in my email. And so what I'm asking you to add is authority to accept the sole source letter from Physio Control on their products, and authority to issue a PO for Lucas devices.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? I'm afraid so.
Motion approved.
Motion approved. This from Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Cross. I'm afraid so. All vote.
And thank you for checking on that. I thought, I was thinking EMSOF as well. That's where, that's where my mind was.
Well, that's what, and this was the first year that we have the new EMS budget within there. And so it was just a little bit of confusion. But I do appreciate Brian working too, to save us some money on this, which he did. And so we can get the PO issued and save those, those monies.
Okay. Anything else?
We have some additional business.
Well, we got one more. I mean, we got other, election of officers on here also.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Business, yes.
That'd be the other item under there. It's time for our president, vice president situation deal.
That is the, what you're?
That is one. We also have one other thing that Mike wanted to talk to you about, but that is the first thing, the election of officers, and however y'all want to handle that.
Well, why don't we let Mike do his thing, and then we finish up with the election officer?
Okay, and we do have an executive, a need for executive session.
I didn't know Mike had something. Go ahead. Yeah.
Mike, go ahead.
Jump in, front and center.
I'll read down on Forestry, Dozer.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
We all done some checking. Looks like to get a plow to put on Dozer is about thirty thousand dollars.
This is for fire?
That's a heck of a plow.
That is a good one.
How many, how many, that's a turning plow.
That's what it basically is.
Sir?
Thirty thousand? It doesn't have a two, two turns on it, doesn't it? A wheel?
Time you, time you install it, and do it. And that's a pull type. We're looking at a couple others that could be a little less. I don't think we'd go.
Is that new, or is that used?
That's brand spanking new.
Can you buy them used?
I, well, trying to buy them used and.
Trying to spec it out from stake.
Spec it out and do this, this kind of.
And change out all the bearings and boxes.
Right, it's about impossible, too.
I thought we were getting the equipment from Forestry. Well, they got a deem at Surplus Property to send it over there, too. You don't ever know what they decided to put.
It might be a year from now.
I got an impression that they're not gonna put anything out. They're gonna still use the equipment they've got, but it's gonna have bigger stockpiles at the locations. I mean, they're not really getting rid of the equipment.
Because there's no advantage to them to get rid of the equipment.
Just they decided just to quit.
They bought it and had to repurchase it at every chance.
They're not gonna come over here at all?
Well, I think, no, they're coming. They're just coming along with the labor.
We're within a new region to react to, but it's just.
Said my district office is being in Rankin County, it's in Simpson County now.
It's gonna be in Pearl, too. Now, they're gonna have equipment in Pearl staging, but it gets back to the same problem we got. We got, what is it, now twenty-two counties in this region, I think?
What they, what they told me, like Mr. Bob said, they're gonna take this equipment, stage it around. But if our operators down in Covington County, you know, when they can get somebody up there to get this, they're coming, you know.
And we could stage, we could stage it at your place, couldn't we? And lock the gate, and then they get to it when they get to it.
Can you use that disc for something, for other, is there something else?
It's a turning plow.
Well, I could start planting crops up somewhere.
Row it up.
Well, you mean, you said that's a, that's a pull type?
That is a pull type. We're looking at some that actually hook on, make, that you have to unbolt and do, it's a lot, a little bit cheaper, you know. This is a.
But when you say pull, it's not, I mean, it will lift up.
Yeah, but this, the one we're looking at has actually got two big wheels on it.
Yeah.
And, I mean, he hooks the drawbar, and you take off, and it goes to plow.
I don't like that one as much.
No, we don't like that one. We've been waiting on Stripling to get us quote, but we knew that was on the top side of it.
Yeah. You can get yourself in a bind up in some of that pulling thing.
That's what we was looking at there. And then, and I talked to several dealers about a replacement dozer. Just didn't know which direction y'all wanted to go on that, to replace the dozer we're giving up for Forestry. We're gonna have to have a dozer.
So we, one dozer was coming off contract, or coming off at the end of the lease buyback, and we decided just go ahead and exercise option to keep it.
And that's what we're looking at, yeah.
And use that dozer for this job, and that number will have to either do a new lease back for.
We're doing another lease back for another, another dozer for the county.
What size dozer is the one that's coming off?
It's like a D thirty-nine. It might be about an eighty, ninety horse tractor. That's about what they use in Forestry. It's a small dozer to get around.
But it'll pull a thirty thousand dollar disc, courtesy of our.
I reckon so, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's spec, it's spec for that dozer.
Sounds like a heavy sucker to me.
But, oh.
Oh, they're heavy duty. That's really, I'd see.
But I just kinda got some numbers, and that's where we're, that's where we at on the numbers on that right now.
The other, did you put it to a blade on the dozer or something?
No, it looks almost like a plow raises up and down.
Like a three-point.
Yes, got hydrox, you pick it up and come down. It's still pulling, but you can actually pick it up. I hate to have something pulling that you're gonna be.
Where you going to buy it from? You got the money budget?
We're gonna have to get, huh?
You got the money budget?
Yeah, that's basically.
We got a little bit of money.
I think at some point, we need to go over where we stand, you know, for our current year. How much money we got left? I know we've been spending it pretty rapidly.
What's that?
Budget discussions are coming up.
Well, somebody existing.
They're probably.
Yeah, where we are right now.
You went through all your money. You don't have any more.
Well, I, I think, you know, I'd like to get a little more in-depth conversation, not just talk about where we are this year, but, you know, our, where we need to go next year. We got some projects coming up we need to pay for. So we need to figure out how we're gonna pay for all of them.
We're talking good in the weeds on that today.
No, no.
All right, so can we do it in our next meeting then?
Probably not.
You gonna be ready to do something next meeting to discuss that?
Okay.
No, no?
No.
Okay.
Thirty thousand is a small piece.
I'm still fair of feeling we gotta bid. You know, we got a lot of timberland in this county, you know, and a lot of houses, nice houses close up to this timberland. It could have a huge impact.
Well, I mean, I'm already getting calls from these big landowners, you know.
Maybe some of these big landowners wanna help contribute, pay for it.
Fortunately, fortunately, we've had an unusual rainy season. And we're not dry like we normally would be this time of year, but we still got August, September. Well, we got July, August, September.
I mean, if we don't, if we don't get started on this, we're gonna be in a pinch on this.
Right.
And, you know, and I mean, that is the thing. We are fortunate enough, we do have some big people, you know, in the county, and they do come in and help when timber's on fire, you know. We didn't do it without, you know, so.
So if we try to do it, like, were you talking about on Fifth, Jay? It's not really gonna do much good until, because Mike and I have talked about this, till he can bring me something on the projects, some estimates, what the projects are and some estimates. Other than that, I'm just gonna be playing a guessing game, being saying, you know, here's our cash balance, and here's what the budget is. But do we know what those projects are, and how much it's gonna take out of our cash reserve? And until I get figures from John's office to say what our increase is for the year, it's just gonna be a guessing game.
Well, some of those projects, though, we hadn't even taken out, we approved them, but we've not even taken that money out.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's still there.
Yeah, Andrew Chap.
Yeah, we approved the engineering.
Yeah.
And buying the right of way.
Yeah, we did. Right, there wasn't, right, it was engineering, and we've been paying for that long, in the right ways. And we've been paying for that. So we're, we are paying for it. It's not just sitting out there.
That'll be reflected. We, the right of way and the engineering.
We've been, we've been paying that.
But the project.
We've not, we've not paid all the right of way.
No, we're paying it as we go, though.
Drinking the weeds.
The offers.
All right. We, we can, all right, let's move on, man.
I'm in favor of doing what needs to be done to facilitate us having a dozer and a plow in this county.
But I'm not so, I'm not, I do want you to look into that, I mean, thirty thousand dollars for two-bottom plow.
Well, I agree.
You're talking about two-bottom turning plow.
I agree with you. And we're gonna, we're gonna look at some other avenues to get it. But, you know, we just basically went to the dealer that furnishes the plow for the Forestry thing, and kinda got some options.
Is that the number one one they use?
Yes, sir.
They use the pull?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Right.
I got you. Okay.
Yeah.
But I'll have, I was hoping today I would have had it, but I don't have the other figures.
I would've thought that'd be something.
The others, are they gonna be more money?
No, this would be the top end of it.
Oh, of course. You just come on in there, baby.
Well, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather be high than, than just be low and say, hey, I need another twenty-five.
I need another ten thousand, yeah.
But I mean, I've got to, I got a quote on the new dozer. If we, you know, if we go that route, you know, we can go ahead, and I think me and Lawrence talked about it. We've got time to advertise and do, just like we did the other day. Talk to all the equipment guys. They've got them on, on the shelf, so.
But is, are there, are there any that can, any way we can advertise it and a plow, spec out a plow like we want? This, I'm just, I don't know that. I'm just seeing, would that be an option?
Well, if we can buy a dozer, it's gonna be a little more than.
Yeah.
But the dozer, we're gonna do a lease purchase, like we've always done.
Well, the real reason I'm saying that is the, it became rigged, already rigged out, because we're gonna buy the dozer, then we're gonna buy the plow, then we're gonna pay the plow and have it rigged out. I didn't know whether that was a way any of the dealers, any of the dealers had access to something that you spec out of that type of plow, like the parts people use.
Yeah, I might be, I might be able to turn, keep it.
Right.
I might be able to do that, just. Yeah, I may be, I may be able to tie, I may be able to do that, just turn it back.
It's just a suggestion, I mean, you've been dealing with it, so you, you're up on it more than I am.
But I'm saying, you say advertise the plow, and hooking it up on the old dozer, and order, and...
May, maybe, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'd just like to buy a brand-new dozer with a plow on it.
No, no, I'm not, no.
When we got, when we got a good used dozer, I think what we're...
Right, that hopefully is not used nearly as much as could be.
So, Mike, are you planning on, like, just parking that dozer?
We was, reason we looked at this particular plow was, we was looking at a plow that we could deattach from the dozer pretty easy. So if we need to use a dozer for other things in the county, like in the wintertime, when we don't have forestry stuff, we could just unhook it, and we could use, if county crews needed a dozer, when they had another dozer on the job, we, we could use another dozer, that's the reason.
That's a good point, too.
We was looking at this higher-dollar plow, I'm not saying this is the plow we'll end up with, but that's the reason we was looking at that plow, something that we could just pull a pin, unhook the hydraulic hoses, and we can use the dozer however we want.
Mike, don't, don't they, they don't make a, one that has, it seemed like I've seen them, they got the, on the dozer itself has a quick attachment, just like the old quick attachment?
That's right.
That you could hook up, but then you still could drop that if it was not a pull type?
Somebody, I've been looking on the internet, Drew, and it looks like it, the one I found the other day, which is the same brand that Striblin sells, they're supposed to be giving me a quote on it. It looks like it goes in the drawbar pin, all you got to do is drop that pin in there, and somehow it's got, it works off of that drawbar that that cylinder picks up that plow, and all you got to do is un, a couple, a couple hydraulic hoses, and pull that pin, and, I mean, thirty minutes, you're undone.
And that wasn't a pull type, that was?
That was a, that's right.
That was a pickup type?
That was a pickup type.
Yeah, I like that idea, but I, you and I both know, you get up in a thicket of woods, in some situation...
You don't want no trailer-type deal.
No, that you can't twist it around, and lock that brake, and go spin it around, I mean, you're going to be a problem.
But that's what, that's what they had sent us a quote on, because I got to looking at the numbers and stuff, and I was, I was like, I said, "This ain't really what I'm looking for, but at least give me the top end of it." I'm thinking, I'm thinking we're going to be knocking about ten off of that.
All right, well, I think you just need to move, keep on moving in that direction, you kind of, you kind of got an idea of what we really need. Yeah, but just, thanks for keeping us up to date.
I just didn't know whether y'all wanted to advertise, you know, the advertising process.
No, I think they, it sounded like they kind of... Kind of caught us at...
Not what y'all want to do, come back Wednesday with the authority to advertise.
If we got advertising.
If you got, if you got, if you have something by the...
Yeah, I know the dozer, but...
But that, that plow's not going on that dozer.
Yeah, right, that's right, I, wrong, I said that, right, that's not going to work right.
I think I can get the plow quicker than I can get the...
No, you're right, I was still thinking about going on that dozer, it's not going.
Because of the price of the plow, I don't think we have to go through the full advertisement, so he could...
Right.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
And that was the biggest thing, was trying to ballpark that, to make sure that it was not going to fall to where we had to advertise the plow on.
I don't, they know more than I do.
I think we'll be fine, yeah, just move on, get the new dozer, and we'll rig, get the plow as a package to hook to the old dozer.
Yeah, whatever.
You want to talk about that other thing, or we're going to wait until...
Okay. We got a, we got eleven o'clock, something also.
Oh, yeah.
As far as the county offices' positions, didn't, Janet, didn't you have a sheet at one time showing a kind of a rotation or a plan? Showing the...
Yeah.
She, it'll be ten months of this president coming up, and so, now, y'all, y'all decide on the rotation, so I can get it.
Well, what we kind of talked about me before, was that Jay, because he was coming, well, Jared was whenever we came on, and then Jay was District Five, and we would go back to one, two, three, four, and then that way, everyone would have a seat in the presence, seat, within the term.
So that member, why, it was Daniel next, as president, and me, vice president, in the rotation.
If you want, like I say, if we're going to stand at rotation, that's right.
I'm good with it, I made the motion with nominate Daniel.
And yourself?
Me, vice president.
All right, that's second.
Okay, motion, motion for Mr. Marra to nominate Daniel as president and himself as vice president?
That's pretty good.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed.
All right, Janet, we just ran that, babe.
Sorry, guys.
Let's go a little...
Daniel's going to be president, and Bob be vice president.
Slay, be sure you don't miss any of these meetings.
I'll start, uh, when, uh...
That's right, Slay sticks an iron, his money's starting.
You better be a little down the road, you're going to call a work session.
We're canceling work sessions.
In the last ten months, we've averaged getting out of here well before lunch.
All right, what we got? Okay. Without motion, lead going executive session by Mr. Marra, second Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Everyone, please leave the room, we are on a tight schedule today. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be right back.
I think I got it, I think I got it.
Hey, did, uh, did you hear anything? I heard they were going to start interviews. That's what she told me. They said that we didn't have the ten, though, I was in the email we got, one of the... I was in the email, that's right, first name, I was in the email, what it was. A railroad spur.
I mean, I saw the special, maybe, I didn't see the top.
Yeah, he said we wouldn't have to be there.
I was saying, was it repairs or something?
No, it's just, it's some kind of option, some deviation in the railroad spur, I thought. Yeah, we didn't have to, just wanted to be aware. All right.
I make a motion, we're going to...
Motion going executive session by discussed personnel, by Mr. Marra, Earl Second, Mr. Bishop. All in favor, say aye. All opposed. See you later, Chuck. Good seeing you, man. Call me if you need me.